The special meeting of the River Falls Board of Education. This meeting has been properly notified. Do we have any visitors or delegations who would like to address the board this evening? All right, then we are going to move on. Over the past few meetings, we have received a series of presentations that outline the social emotional support that our students are receiving in the school district. And today, River Falls High School is up. So, thank you. Come on up. Remember, the camera is there. And welcome.
Have a good day on your back.
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Sheri Mabeth, and I'm one of the high school counselors. And to start off with, I want to thank you for the action and the consideration that you've taken recently in reducing the graduation credit. I will tell you in conversations with students that are struggling or perhaps in alternative placement like a treatment, there's a great relief. I've already heard that. So I just really want to extend very, very heartfelt gratitude for that consideration that will allow us to continue to personalize learning and support our social and emotional well-being of our students. So then I want to introduce, or I want Whitney to come and introduce herself.
Hi, everybody. My name is Whitney Setnam. I'm a full-time school counselor here at the high school. So before we start, I just wanted to take the time to introduce myself to you. I know I met some of you at the Meet the School Board event in August before this whole year began. So I just wanted formally now introduce myself to you again. I'm very, very happy to be here. I'm loving River Falls. I'm loving my students and my team so much. I'm very happy to have landed here. So thank you for taking the time to listen to us today.
Hi, my name is Jackie. I'm a social worker for the district. I'm housed at the high school for two days a week. I'm housed at the Renaissance Academy, but I'm available to the district. And I absolutely love my job. Thanks for hiring a social worker.
Thanks for being one.
Okay, my name is Molly Scamlin, and I am the part-time counselor. I am between River Falls High School and Renaissance Academy with students between both and doing some structural and systems work this year at the high school. Today, we're talking to you about social emotional services that the high school provides for students. But if you go to the first slide, do I have to look here? Okay. Okay. I want you to know that we make, we use data a lot in all of the work that we do. At the beginning of this year, we did send out a back-to-school survey, asking students where they were at, how they felt about hybrid, how they felt about post-secondary planning. We asked them if they would like to participate in a group. We asked them a lot of questions to help shape what our program would look like this year. The results that you see up there was just one of the questions we asked about how stressed you would be staying on track, academically on track, when you work in a hybrid learning format. And you can see that the range of responses was all across the board. We did delve further into the question and ask about what was it that made them stressful? Was it social connection? Was it technology? Was, and again, we had responses that were very varied. But we will follow up with the survey then again at the end of the year, see how students are responding to the learning format. And yes. When we originally talked to you about academic standards, we mentioned that there are three areas that the high school really focuses on: college and career readiness, academic advisement and intervention, and then social emotional support and career development. We really feel like all three of these areas are important to social emotional development in high school students. Because without one, any student can be stressed in any of the other areas. So if we look at college and career readiness, for example, a student that doesn't have a plan after they leave high school will naturally be more stressed because they're not sure what will happen when they leave. For academic advisement, students that are failing are going to be more stressed than students that are passing. So all three of these areas, while maybe separate, and we could talk at great lengths about any of them, they all do kind of fit together. And that might be a little bit different at the high school level than at the other levels because there is maybe a high stakesness because they'll be leaving the high school in a matter of four years. The academic piece is really talking about earning credits, when they're in college, credits, when they're in school, making a plan. They're creating a transcript in high school. And so the grades that they earn, while they don't always come in understanding it, by the time they leave high school, they really understand that transcript is their record. And most of them want a strong record. Most of them don't tend to be stressed out about it. And I did skip the career component, but Lissa Hansen, the College and Career Readiness Coordinator, we will be presenting to you in a few weeks the academic and career handbook, the course handbook. And inside that, you'll just see a lot of different pathways. At the high school level, students are really individualizing their path and what they plan to do. That varies tremendously for students. From the student who wants to go into the military to the student that wants to go into career to the student who has absolutely no idea what they want to do. And we're trying to work with all of those students to create an individualized path. With COVID, that has been extremely difficult. And students are feeling a lot of stress about what they're going to do when they leave high school because so much is unknown about the future. We're doing our absolute best to communicate, but as you know, changes are being made very rapidly. So even something like the college fair that we would typically have in a few weeks, it's different. It's different this year. We can't do what we've done in the past, but we've provided a lot of resources to students to really explore on their own in the virtual world. So Cal will talk more about the social emotional specific component of our program.
I'm Taylor Johnson, second year at the high school, high school counselor too. So I'm just excited to be here. We're talking probably more about social emotional tonight, but I think we thought it's really important to make sure we highlight the other functions too, because I think you can naturally see how those two things connect overall. Really, a lot of things we've done this year, we revamped our curriculum considerably just to meet the online virtual content. We not only have a virtual school, but we also have kiddos that have gone, whether it's through having to be on a stay-at-home quarantine type of learning, or we kind of go as a whole school too. So we've done a lot of revamping within that process too. So if you look at the top, we have a depression prevention intervention that we did with our ninth grade health classes that have been held thus far. We totally revamped that with the help of our new school site too. I think we've already seen some really positive gains in communication out of that. Our virtual homeroom room, Ms. Sutton, right back here, she did a phenomenal job creating, really going through this. We actually highlight even students' own personal music work and those things within the virtual homeroom room too. We are just trying to make sure we can fit that element to what current format we're at. We have a connections form. It's a QR code. We allow that for students here. But we also have made that virtual too to take away any possible barriers to a student looking for support from the counseling staff. I think we deem that it was extremely important that we took away any barriers to getting in contact with a counselor. I think we're used to here where we have Ms. Amy, our school counseling secretary. And so we can just get to her and set up an appointment in the past where we knew this year that wasn't going to be the case. So we want to go through how we're going to go on, continue our appointment setting up, and we're not going to get in-house setting too, which, by the way, first day back, it was super awesome having to get back in the building. The excitement, and it's just not a building that should be quiet. And it was really nice to have kids around our building. It was just a really neat thing to do. So, resources. We've provided many resources throughout this time as far as tips, different ideas and concepts to go and try to help support their at-home learning, but also trying to give parents some skills to work over either too. And then throughout even the time that we're down, we had access to the counseling office. We have students working down in our counseling office pretty consistently. They've come in for some in-house support, mental health support. We have that ongoing consistently too. And then if you look at our transitions, nice students coming and going, nice peers coming in, wanting to make sure that we continue with that help too and support. But more than anything, we have a lot of social emotional groups going on. As I kind of go into the next slide here, we're mainly talking about trying to connect and engage too. We have a grief group, we have anxiety groups, we're running those things to more traditional counseling groups. But one of the biggest things that we heard from our students was, I'm missing my friends. I don't know how to socialize. How do I socialize in this world? What do I do? Because I'm at home. And so we created a coffee house where kids come in, they play music for their peers. We just hang out, put a fire in the background, and they're listening to their peer play. And we're just drinking coffee or hot chocolate or whatever, and just kind of relaxing and just give that time with your peers too. We've had things even like a pet parade. Kids come in, they show their pets. We've seen all sorts of different pets. I know Ms. Pat had her N11 sign, and Mr. Anderson had run it another time too. They seem like things that are high school setting that you just traditionally wouldn't see. But we really kind of set that aside. We got to get creative and find a way just to get kids engaged and enjoying their time when they're virtual or when they're here, just to make sure that they're connecting to it. So we know so much is social emotional. It's just an opportunity to connect with your peers too. We did trivia, so we've done that with students versus staff trivia type of stuff too. So there's ways to keep our staff engaged too with our students. I think if you talk to any staff, they're missing kids more than anything. You know, they get them on the Zoom calls and those things too, and that's wonderful. But I think they engage with them kind of in that natural enjoyment and not just that teaching to a screen. So just trying to find ways to help out our staff with that process too. And then ongoing individual support at the high school setting. One-to-one counseling will probably still and consistently remains the best way that we can serve students, especially in mental health regard. So we've had that ongoing support continuing with our students too. So that's a really important piece of things too. We have Win Wednesday, that intervention time that's proven to be extremely beneficial. We'll talk more later about student support team, but that's been a really important piece of having that additional time to help support our students too. And then consistent ACP updates. Have you guys, anyone seen the Wildcat edit that we're posting consistently on SchoolG? Lissa Hansen has done an incredible job with those. Our kids are getting a one- to two-minute snapshot of just the happenings, what's going on. They're getting engagement from the high school every single day. And it's been just awesome to see the creativity, different guests, different crazy things. I think, I don't want to advertise it out there, but I have one breakdancing champion at the high school. If you haven't seen that one, please don't go back because I don't want that ever out here again. But we've just found different ways and silly ways to engage our students and have public. Because Miss Brett comes up with really bad ideas and then makes me do them, so. Communication, I think communication's key, especially in a pandemic or just in any school year too. And so we're sending numerous emails, phone calls, always communicating, checking in on our kiddos too. I think we proposed at one point this year that social emotional, if you can do anything right now as a counseling staff, reach out, reach out, reach out. And so we've taken that to heart and just continued those consistent reach outs. Before the year started, we kind of had a transition, listened to kids that would probably be on a radar that we were concerned and worried about. And so we prioritized those originally while trying to keep our ears and eyes open for continuing with our students that could have some ongoing concerns too. Academic supports, talked a little bit about that on Wednesday. But essentially, we kind of have a student F-list. That F-list this year has been larger than what it traditionally is. We average, there's three counselors at the high school setting. We average about five to six pages, and we're between 12 to 15 students per. So there's been concerns there, we've spent a lot of time on what we call kind of academic tracing. We know that there's a lot of reasons why students could be failing, but we know mental health and social emotional is a large component of that. So when we use that data, it's just to basically to see what we can do to help support from a counselor perspective. Students concerned, kind of similar concept with the two. But with the virtual school, they also have a students concerned list too. So that we can make sure we're carrying in helping support from that area also. System supports, if you look at the top of this slide here, this is one of the many different committees that we all attend or are part of too. And so we're just continuing that district-wide supports, the things that we do within our district too. Going down below, we have many new community resources. Jackie Graham, our social worker here, has really done a great job communicating and connecting with our community. And so that's been important for us to make sure that we could have those additional resources. I think it's one thing to identify student need, but it's another thing to have the resources that can actually back up student needs. And so having Jackie here and helping with that support, that could be very beneficial for our program and for what we can do to help serve students too. And then, this is going to look kind of similar to what I already presented, but this is a virtual school. I think we said, you know, it was important for you guys to understand the elements of what it looks like in the high school setting, but also what it looks like in the virtual school setting too. They get the same daily updates that our high school students are getting. It's on SchoolG, the Wildcat, and it's the different communications we have up there too. They're receiving the same type of information. They have access to those same groups. So whether it's an anxiety group, we have multiple virtual school students that tend to be part of our anxiety groups in the past too. And then we have also had a grief group too that's all been open to them too. And then I've also had students come into our coffee house in virtual setting too. So we try to allow the opportunity here from our virtual school kids that they miss their peers. You know, they want, still have those same connections, but they may have something, you know, that's maybe inhibiting them coming in, or maybe the virtual setting is less for their family. But that doesn't mean that they don't want to be with their friends that they have had with them previous years too. And so having those same groups, they have that opportunity, it's been really, really good. Like I said before, the virtual school has a students are concerned tracking list. And that's been something that we've used quite a bit to try to help support the virtual school. Like it was a summer Sunday, we were with those teachers pretty consistently. And then as we kind of go into the last slide here, some of that tracking list is predominantly academic, but we have a social emotional checkbox too. If something comes up, we know that, okay. We got to make sure we're communicating, interacting with those kiddos too. From a systems and structure, like Ms. Molly said, we use a lot of our information, a lot of staffs to make the decisions that we do. We spent about 20% of our caseload time this year in direct services with virtual school students. On average, we have only about 20 students per counselor. And our total caseload is 350 plus right now per counselor. So we're spending a lot of time in the virtual school setting, trying to make sure we can help with that support, both social emotional and academic. So those numbers and ratios are obviously higher, I think, due to us now implementing a new program. But it's something we need to be important to help and support too. But it's definitely got a large chunk of our time spent. And then we do a lot of individual counseling too. Question?
You mentioned you have 20 students per counselor, and that's in the virtual E-school, correct?
Yes.
Okay. How many counselors, what's the student counselor ratio in the high school?
So our student counselor ratio is at a minimum, I think we have 350. I think we have one counselor that has just over 360.
Okay.
You know, I think there is importance to that number, 1 to 350, not in a virtual setting, not in a pandemic. It's already proven to be difficult. I think that Ask Us, well, counselor model says 1 to 250. When you go over that, it feels like you're putting out fires. We're chasing and trying to do as much as we can to with that too. But I stated, as I was a new counselor two years ago, and it was a brand-new position, I think I turned to them a million times and said, how did you guys do this in two and a half? And we've had a roll-in changes in this stuff too, but 350 plus is what we're each in right now.
What's the Wisconsin average?
Yeah.
The Wisconsin average, I'm not sure, I think it's low 300 is what I remember right. So.
I can personally attest to working so fully with the student services team that I'm sure you guys are familiar with Google calendars and they try to collaborate with your time wisely. They are very efficient at scheduling those times. They're scheduling on weekends and at every point, they're very scheduled. But then on top of the schedule, they also have to respond quickly to the emergency phone calls, the emergency Watkins. They will also, I mean, attest to my kind of scan in line outside their doors, their windows. And I peer into their windows because I'm too waiting in line to get onto their agenda because we're trying to, you know, problem solve and, you know, be as responsive as we can to families. And we like to also be very timely. So that is something that is very noticeable. You know, anytime I pick up the phone, I look at their calendars, and I'm like, oh, they're busy for the next three hours. Like I'm going to have to try to run in there and sneak in there to talk to them. So they're very efficient with their time, but they're also pretty scheduled.
So I have a question, and that's about, how do you find and maintain the balance between, these are high school kids who need to learn to advocate for themselves and seek out support with the fact that they're high school kids and they're still children who sometimes don't know how to do the advocacy, don't know how to reach out for the support? I imagine that's always a challenge, and this year's probably a particular challenge. But how do we respond to students in that situation?
I think there's, I think there's always importance, every kid's an individual. So if you counsel is like, you know, you're going to counsel to a large group, well, no, you have to look at each kid as an individual. And they all have different skill sets, they all have different things that they're ready and they're prepared to do. And the ones that aren't, it's, you're there to coach them. We spend a lot of time coaching, we spend a lot of time doing it for them because we are in this last four years. And so it's more about skill building and doing that coaching basis of things than about, we're going to go and talk to that teacher for them. So I think everything that we try to do is knowing that we're doing it with a focus of post-secondary, that they have a life here after the high school. And so if we don't help develop that skill now, whether in a high school setting, then, you know, it can be very, very dangerous to basically leave our building without these skills developed, so.
I'll just add to that, that that's a big collaboration piece. So like Ms. Sarah mentioned, waiting out back at the door. So that's a big, okay, we heard this, what is the teacher saying, what is the parent saying? And then really trying to figure out what is the issue? Is it a visual issue? Is it a technology issue? Is it a systems issue? So really, then the more that you have collaborating with us, the easier that is. So communication is really important for us to help figure out kind of this consistent puzzle. The teachers are a big part of it, the parents are a big part of it. And sometimes when there isn't a parent involved in it, then that answers that question of what does that state the need? It has to, it might just be really some help learning some of those skills.
And then the accountability to the student in terms of follow-up on that. Yeah, Mike?
So I understand all of our Chrome, school issued Chromebooks have software on them to flag various categories of risk behavior. I'm just curious, does that get back to you, or how does that get back to you? Have you noticed an increased incidence of that this year?
I can speak to that a little bit. So tied with their school email and the Google Drive account is something called securely.
Yeah.
And one thing that we know is that if you're typing an email, if you're typing in a Google Doc, it does catch those phrases and those airwaves of concern. Although I will say, there does seem to be a difference between the early years, like the eighth graders and the ninth graders tend to get flagged. The most, the 11th graders and the seniors tend to catch on. Then if they want to research something that's going to get them flagged, they tend to know to go to a phone or a private account. Although we will still have kids that are of all the very normal type things like, I'm not doing well, I need to talk to somebody now. Like they don't even address it to somebody, and they'll come in securely. It comes very quickly. It goes to the entire admin team. And then generally, we immediately look up their school counselor, and then that begins a whole process. And that would be one of those conversations, I'm standing outside the door, that we get to the student right away, make sure they're safe. We try to, you know, hit the root of the problem by making them type it into their email. And then we start to really problem solve with the parents, you know. If this heavy call is waiting a little bit, and you call this way for a long time, and then you start to talk about, you know, someone may be home with them after school, and then they're needed. Maybe you guys want to talk to them, we go, there's like a whole protocol. So.
I think we've seen it.
I'm concerned that the kids have learned very well what's so hard to type in. Like the seniors and the juniors in particular, they have figured out what's not get flagged.
This, the data shows that not as many students have been flagged. I think we were doing the same last year comparatively. Number of students is not anywhere near where it was last year.
Is that because they're using?
Important to some of the data that we had on there too is that, like our school connectivity, our students still connected to our staff. Those numbers were incredible. You know, the securities that I dealt with this year, there's been multiple times where I had already heard about it from the teacher who received that email that triggered in the security. And I was already working with this other time, this threat came down to let me know. And which to me, I think that speaks to us to our staff in a way. That's been a really.
I'm trying to this year is that they're typing very personal things to their teacher. And then that email to their teacher is getting flagged, and that's scary right now.
Which is, I mean, that red screen to our staff, how just while they're connecting with students, especially in their current environment too. I don't think that has been a past trend, though we have seen that in many, many cases. It's been phenomenal that they feel like they're comfortable enough to reach out to us.
But you mentioned the incidence of securely are lower this year than last year year-to-date. Okay, so you're thinking early intervention by teachers is reducing those numbers? Or, or they're figuring out the system, or?
They're figuring out the system. I also, I mean, I would say that maybe you have a policy of not using your phone during active time. And so in the past, they would get to be on their phone and test something or search something. So they would do that on their computer. And so now I was in need of trying to turn it off.
Yeah, or else they're using the parent's computer at home or laptop. Yeah, okay, makes sense.
I have a general comment and a more specific one. The general one is, it was really good, and you're a really good team, and you're doing some really good work. This is, it should go without saying, but you just, the magnitude of what you just put up there, the fact that we've got a team of people here who not only just have to be good counselors, they need to know the curriculum. they need to understand the policies of the, of the high school, they need to understand individual students, they need to understand all the nuances that are going on here. Plus, they have time to do one-on-one stuff, and the Wellcap Minute, by the way, is really good. It gives us a great example of some of the stuff that's going on. So kudos to you guys. I think that this is a real plus, and I think it's often lost on people who are dealing with the, with the high school, the parents, other teachers, et cetera, to not realize the breadth and depth of expertise that a good counseling staff needs to have, along with having a social worker now. Anyway, we're going in the right direction, and I really appreciate that. My specific thing is, you put up here the survey, I'm really glad your, your survey on students. Your M was 814, that's an, that's 814 out of 1,000?
Yeah, just over 1,000.
Wow, okay. So always with, and that's, that's a good response rate, but always when I see data, I'm as interested in who's not there as who is there. So do you think that was a representative response? Do you think that we're missing 200 students who should have been represented up there?
It was a pretty eclectic group. So basically, night, for example, there were, there were about 70 students who expressed interest in joining the evening. Now, not that many students would follow through, but it was a pretty, it was social, economic, different grade levels, was a pretty representative example. Renaissance was made with a different survey, and that's a much trickier proposition to survey. The response rate wasn't as strong like that, but the piece was smaller, and it can be much more visualized. So at the high school, I'd be, it was pretty representative for people reading it more.
I'm wondering if you could talk more, Jackie, if you could talk about your work in the district from the standpoint that you're not only an important additional set of hands, but you bring a different expertise compared to what we've had before with having a social worker. And if you all could talk about what that has been, and what difference that brings to the district, I think that would be really helpful.
A different perspective, meaning I'm kind of more at self-determination, giving people the tools to be able to access resources in the community, so that I will always help them, but I will first give them the tools, and then if they ask for, if they need me to help them walk them further through the process, then I'm there to do that. That seemed to be working really well, I've had really good response from parents. Doing it that way, is that what you're asking?
I think that can go on top of our answer. So we all really collaborate a lot, and I think all of us do driveway visits and home visits, but Jackie has added in another layer of home visits. And sometimes there's just areas of my own personal weakness, and I'm like, I have to answer this. So you do a home visit, and you learn that the student isn't coming to school, and then you find out there's food issues, and the car is broken, they can't pay the rent. And so she is the, you know, the hero, with all the answers waiting in the wings that you come in and talk about assistance of utilities, assistance of the rent. She has more ability to do the driveway chats, and I'll say, we've utilized her for driveway chats, and.
We're as well.
There are times, there are times where it's just not appropriate for assistant principals to request someone to emergency work, like it's just not appropriate. You discover that there's mental illness, or there's severe drama. And so really and truly, what you wanna do for that family is you wanna help them, you just wanna help them. And so you just say, okay, you know, like, I just wanna get you to school, and we just want you to get a diploma, so you can go on to greater things, but I need, I need like more help and assistance. So someone named Jackie Graham is our school social worker, and I just talked to her at night, and I said, she's gonna be contacting you just to help wrap up those kinds of people that need homelessness issues.
Transportation issues.
Transportation, yeah.
Clothes.
If I can add to it, it has been amazing.
Amazing.
To have a collaborative person who, who, it takes a lot of work to stay connected with the community, and to have even just the company social workers to have that connection. For Jackie, as a social worker, can have that relationship. And I don't have to do that anymore. Not that I couldn't, and not that I still don't, to talk to social workers, but she has the relationship, and it's just been so wonderful to have that collaboration, and.
There's friends.
So, is it appropriate then to say that having a school social worker within the district is allowing us to be able to address some of the issues that are foundational to why our children and families are struggling?
Yes.
So that if homelessness is the issue, now we have somebody in the district dedicated to helping to address the issues of homelessness, which in turn can make our students and our families healthier, so that they are going to be able to have a better effect, more effective experience at school.
And I'm sure.
So that's the kind of stuff that we are now able to do, that we weren't able to do with as much dedication or with a dedicated person to that spot, and the relationship.
She's an expert.
Okay.
But we did do it a lot.
I know they did, but it's a different kind of thing to have somebody where your expertise is in that area.
I think in the past, it was you would identify that family, which is great, we would identify them, you bring them to the resources, but the opportunity to come back and turn around and walk with them, be a part of it, was, was much more challenging to do. And when you're servicing 350-plus individuals, you have Jackie allow that chance, that focus with that family to make sure it doesn't just start, because so many things on the county level, they can just start, and then it's so many, so much stuff that you have to go to, there's so much language barriers, there's different things that happen. For what Jackie, you know, going through with students of our minority family, any family that we're working with, she's there along the whole step of it. And so we know that all of this happens completely. And I think that changes from like a previous counselor, like regular counselor in the district for one time, but sometimes things would stop, and you weren't sure why to stop, and you have to restart again. Where now we're not doing that restart, and having to get that, you know, this person, it was a one person, and we're a two county district. So it's that much more challenging to navigate, it's hard enough to navigate one county, and Jackie even just navigating our two counties, one is so vastly different than the other. And so to have this expert who knows, okay, if you're coming through one district, or you're a one people, here's a community support team with this county, but this county doesn't have community support team, that's almost an extra thing, this per week's pay, that adds to the, it's just been, you know, six months.
Yeah, I think for, for quite a while, the board has understood how important this position is to the district, but I think it's really important for the community to understand how important this is, which is why I wanted to give you a chance to be able to talk about this. So thank you.
I think that, to pick off on that, this, as you know, it's sort of, sorry, you know, this board for a long time had this social worker position queued up in our list of priorities, and we were waiting, all the kinds of stuff that compete with a new position, a new position, and we finally were able to do it. And so you're giving us some good information back. One of the challenges we've got when we're doing staffing issues is, what you folks do is not nearly as easy to quantify as a classroom teacher, for example. We got X number of fourth graders, and they need this many teachers, and the parents see the kids in the class, et cetera. What you do is softer, and it's behind the scenes, and it's incredibly important for what we do, but it's less, it's less quantifiable. And so to hear this qualitative conversation to help us with it is very, very important to support, because I think we felt very strongly for a long time that this was a position we needed, so.
Jackie Graham has an added layer of safety net to basically just save people from falling to the cracks, like the things that keep us awake at night. Jackie gives us the peace of mind to be able to follow through and monitor all the people that just need that extra TLC.
And I think you've been, you've done a good job here of helping us understand, and this is where Stacy was going with that question too, the difference between a counselor and a social worker.
Yeah.
Your work is, is related, and it's really integrated, but it's not necessarily the same work, right? But we need a vote.
I will tell you, the community in the region is really generous, and very, and many areas, so very good community that cares about the people.
You're original.
You're false.
I'm from the region, or did I say the region?
You said. That's what we were hoping to hear, okay. Todd?
I have a question that's not really, it's not related to the pandemic, thank goodness, and, but I'm, I'm curious when I see the first slide about like the college and career readiness, and hearing about the plans, and some of the anxiety that goes along with it. It, it's interesting to me, you know, how much that might have evolved since I was in high school, and even what it's like for those kids that go on to college or a career. But I'm, I'm curious what the, what the, like, where the tipping point is between, I'm anxious because I'm not prepared, or I'm anxious because I'm, I'm so hyper-focused on something. I'm just kind of curious what the dynamic is for those kids, and how we balance that, because I, I hear some of those things, and I immediately jump to a, we don't wanna put too much pressure on people to be on one track, because, you know, my track changed after college, and, and my track changed in college, and I'm sure that's true of most people. And so I'm just kind of curious where that balance, or what you see, how kids navigate that.
I think our goal is to teach them the skills.
Okay.
And, and that's where it is really tricky at our level, is to teach the skills, not necessarily be able to afford that, but when you decide to go back to look for a different career, you would have the skills then to go and know where to access the resources.
Okay.
And some students have that, have some support and knowledge base, and other students really truly like, if you were to say that they wanted to change careers, they don't have any idea where to go with that.
Okay.
So I think it is a pretty individual conversation, because each student is a little bit different, but I believe in high school, it's to teach the skill.
Okay.
And can I, can I add, one of the things that we have implemented in the past several years are individual planning conferences. And they have been very well received, and we involve parents, primarily at the sophomore level, where, where it's, we, we invite them into this conversation that we see as an ongoing conversation about what the student strengths are and their interests, and, you know, it's like empowering the family to just feel really involved and take their time, and it's okay if you don't even know.
Okay.
When you get up to graduation, you know, it's just this, this conversation, it's like, every, every student goes about this planning process, and young people go about it differently. And so those, the parents are very important in that process, and we, we try our very best to engage and heighten, empower, inform the parents to be our part of the team.
We also, on top of the sophomore meeting, we do another senior planning meeting, talk with our students really that they're really, you know, I think here's September or October, as they're starting to make those other decisions too. Just not to mention, we have information from the sophomore meeting, but we wanna see where they're going to. And so if they're right along the process, they already, you know, attended, they've done their visit, they have their applications in, awesome, that meeting's pretty quick, and we just get to kind of celebrate where they're at. But if they're not, we really, like, there's really good bases between the three of us, to make sure that we know, okay, if your students need more additional support, you're probably using most of the tools, we got that for those students too. And then each has about 80-plus senior. And so your goal is that, more than half of them are already gonna be in that process, and we've got everything going the right way, and then the others are not, we wanna make sure that they have the support to continue in that process too.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. I just know it can be kind of a tricky, you know, which way do you tip that scale? And, and, you know, for some kids, it, it could be, could be anxiety one way, and some it, it could be because they're pressured to do something. So I'm glad to hear that, that there's, you know, a pretty unique and flexible way to manage that.
It's always a really tricky conversation, because some students are ready, and they, they know exactly what they want, and exactly where they wanna go, and they have a lot of support. And then other students are just, you know, they're thinking about tomorrow.
Sure.
And so it's, it's a pretty, pretty tricky conversation.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Cindy?
Yep. Jackie, I know social work is notoriously a thankless profession, but you just got a whole bunch of them.
Yes.
Right? Lots of kudos, so I hope you put those in your pocket for those days that you need them. Right? For that, for that little uplift. So, and if you didn't, we can write them down for you, whatever you need. So thank you, that's been a great addition to our district. I have one question about, are you seeing similar or different needs between our virtual and our face-to-face students this year?
For me, I, because we all kind of work at a high level, I live with a lot of students, so I guess we just, you know what, mine are pretty similar. It's, but I think that's because of my students that go along, I know in that virtual world. And so I already unified their persons, I think we've seen some of our tracks, but a lot of isolation, a lot of, a lot of transitions, a lot of worrying about that, because I think that's been predominantly pretty consistent with me.
Well, I would, I would add that we follow, for the most part, we follow our students who are in our caseload. So we, we have, we have relationships, you know, the seniors that I'm working with, I've been working with, and, and their parents, they were in ninth grade, so I, I know those families. So it's very, very similar. Now, in ninth grade, they're, they're more unique to us, beginning to know them. And I would, I would say it's very similar, you know, the issues of helping them to engage and to really kind of invest in their education, it's gonna be some of the issues. But.
Ninth grade, I would say, periodically, we have the high mark of personal accountability, I had a pretty distinct relationship with. The ninth grade was brand new in the virtual. Also, we've done things like do creative videos to get them to see in our faces. A lot of our messages are videos and recordings, so we're trying to get that out. We do a lot of just reach out, see emails and that kind of stuff too. I think it's a lot of time to leave, like, to parents and families, I have been dealing with parents, and I think just this morning, it was a long line of, finding if you can get any, you know, just on that, or this whole time, yeah, this is part of it, and they don't necessarily see that email, but we've tried to do ways to make them still see our face, you know, in the video conference, probably have a few more channels, but.
I, I will say though, that academically, the virtual school, a new program, is very difficult to map with a high school. So a large portion at the very beginning of this year, and even now this change touching, and students are in different classes, that's a very large part of the virtual schools this year, and that's a, a challenge, to figure out how academically a virtual school student fits within our district. It's not a perfect system.
Interesting. Thank you. Well, I want to thank you first of all for your work, that's the most important thing. I appreciate it, I know the full board does. Wanted to thank you for being here tonight, and for a comprehensive presentation that was really helpful, for allowing us to ask you many questions, and get to you, to help us understand and have a window into what you do. I'm also really appreciative of the work that you do with all of our students, including the fact that it, it, it's pretty clear when you talk about the 20% of your time that's dedicated to the virtual school, those students are not left behind. Those students are receiving at least as much attention in terms of your time as our students who are in our more typical RFHS. So, thank you very much. I expect that we'll see you at some point, but it's not rude to leave now, after you've spent this much time with us. So I will tell you that. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the next thing is, we have this pretty much weekly tradition up till now, with Mr. Benson leading us in from the slides. Might be a couple of changes today, but it's all yours.
Couple of tweaks here, and a reminder where we're at with our social, emotional support teams providing presentations. We've got a couple more groups coming up. Back up the slide here. We gotta tweak this, don't we? The 18th.
Yes.
Will be the, what, 25th?
25th.
Aaron, help me communicate, help remind the community that to all the right people. The St. Clair County website? Pierce County website? We certainly like to see that the vaccines are growing in number, a long way to go, obviously.
Jamie, do you know, if people are vaccinated, like in Minnesota, will they be, they won't be on the Pierce County one, that's just the shots given by Pierce County, right?
The shots administered by Pierce County alone.
Okay.
Pierce saying whether or not somebody that lived in Pierce County though somehow got their vaccine because they worked in a neighboring.
Exactly.
I honestly, I guess I can't say for sure, but I believe these are only the Pierce County administered vaccines. I'm pretty sure.
That's.
Makes sense, yeah.
That's what I would think. I was just curious, we have to have a lot of healthcare workers that work in Minnesota that would be also vaccinated.
Yeah, right.
Positivity rates. Positivity rates, we should show that slide. That's cumulative. We'd love to see that. Those numbers continue to stay low, but obviously they're low because we're early in the month of January. And then we, I'd like to just kind of skip past this one and go to this. And for the sake of space, because we are now at, what is it, Eric? Week eleven? Twelve weeks worth. This goes back to October dates and so on. I'm going to jump forward because of space on PowerPoint slide. We now had to break this one into a two-page paper. We'll make sure also, Aaron, that your spreadsheet behind the scenes to create this slide. Let's make sure that we're linking the full sheet on our website and we can provide that to the board and so on. So that you can see all of those weeks together in one place. And within all those categories, I can't help but be drawn personally to looking at, you know, the averages. And then where are we at here today in relation to those averages? Coming off of a holiday rebound, so to speak, and speculation as to whether or not we might see increased COVID cases based on that holiday break. And people gathering and so on. I think it's still too early to speculate whether we see the end of that potential rebound effect or not. But this is where we are currently at with the data that we are, that we are tracking. This is kind of the game summary sheet where at the top of the blue area, this kind of serves as a reminder today. We are back with nine through twelve, back in our hybrid model. Same is true. We have been back with the seventh and eighth grade in hybrid. Page six continues five days a week. And the new piece here, we talked about the spectator athletic event issue last week. And so the new piece here is related to a link that I shared with the board. And for the public, that link is available through this PowerPoint, a letter from Raleigh Hall, our, our AD. Who explained, the board had basically said, hey, can you, we might be, is the board interested in either seeing. Additional tickets above and beyond the four that are now allowed for our home players to be provided four tickets per player. We might be interested in seeing that number go higher, or we might be interested in considering whether or not visiting spectators could have a couple of tickets. And so we'll get into that a little more here in a second. So we always say to confirm that, we'll have some more conversation here. And then additional discussion, I wanted to break this out again for the sake of space, for everything that I wanted to kind of put down into writing. Needed to add a couple of slides. A, safety factors considered as we all have an interest in wanting to return to seven through twelve grade. Five days a week in an ideal world. We've got some safety considerations there. And then board advocacy will be a separate line item for a board call. Just to put a shout out and some advocacy for educators to be considered in the prioritization of vaccines. So I'm going to break these next two out here a little bit. First slide. Safety factors and considerations as we look at the option for seventh through twelfth grade to return to five days a week. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One is that we will always continue to look at our COVID data. We'll always continue to do that in the decision-making process as we've been doing all along. A reminder, just as a point of consideration, what makes the, what makes this a little bit of a different decision? If I'm a high school, for example, comparing to an elementary teacher who is in a classroom, let's say with twenty-three or twenty-four students. As an elementary teacher at the high school level, by comparison, I might see eighty to ninety different students. On a student to teacher, that should be a teacher, sorry, typo, that kind of ratio could be a much higher number. I just wanted to remind them more. That's a part of something that needs to be considered with this. Next thing is what might that new strain of the virus that we keep reading and hearing about? How might that continue to increase some of our concerns? And then of course, what kind of progress are we going to see with the vaccine? So I just kind of want to mention some things as we look towards the future. We're not pressing fast and furiously to this five-day goal, but I wanted to put a couple of those considerations. Kind of planting those seeds in your mind as we continue to look forward to that. The other piece, again, I mentioned this would be listed separately on your board agenda as an action item. We just put together a basically, a wording for a resolution of sorts that says, look, we recognize that. Medical workers, EMTs, nursing home, hospital staff, pharmacists and so on need to be first in line for the vaccine. Certainly we recognize the elderly and people who are vulnerable because of pre-existing conditions need to be considered as soon as possible. Recognize there's all kinds of defining who falls into a category of essential workers has been an ongoing debate. And we know that there's many groups that fall into that category. But the bottom line is we're, we're suggesting, we also recognize that school faculty and staff are essential in the daily lives of our kids. For academic, social, emotional, physical support. And therefore, strong considerations should be given to provide educators with COVID vaccines as soon as possible. And kind of a reiteration of that statement here saying that the Board of Education strongly encourages state and federal agencies, Governor Evers, DHS, legislature. Those in charge of determining who's at the front of the line and how do we prioritize the decision for who's vaccinated? That, that again, we designate educators to be placed within that essential worker category to be prioritized by the state of Wisconsin. And the earliest vaccine distribution plan is, is practical, reasonable and feasible. We don't want to get ourselves in a bind where suddenly the board is saying, we think educators should come before the, the hospital staff. We don't want to get into a situation where our advocacy is suggesting that we become, come before others. We're putting out a voice of advocacy through this issue to recognize the important role that our educators play. And so there, there, this has certainly been a marathon, but we are approaching the final leg of this grueling race. So let's not become complacent and let's not succumb ourselves to the COVID fatigue. Stay home when you're ill, physically distant, wear a mask, sanitize, do all the things that we have to continue to remain vigilant. In the coming weeks and even months before we get to a point of that vaccine really obtaining what many would call herd immunity. We're a ways away from that. We have to remain vigilant. So I got to jump back now to then this topic of the link. And the board was providing this earlier in the day, just for your discussion and consideration. Administratively, we, and I'm sure you two as a board, recognize that now that you last week said. We feel that we can safely distance and still allow four tickets for our own spectators. On one hand, we recognize that there are parents from other communities that want so desperately to also watch their sons and daughters participate in these events. They want to come to our house and be able to watch their sons and daughters participate. And so might we, you as a board said, well, convince us and tell us and do the math and make sure that. Within the facility that we're talking about, a gymnasium for a wrestling match, a gymnastics meet, a basketball game. That we still believe space is obtainable if we increase the number of tickets. And so Raleigh has done that and we've used essentially a thirteen-foot rule to say that if you as parents. And now grandma, grandpa, additional guardian, a sibling, if you are in your home together. Then we're saying, we understand that you could still be sitting in the bleachers in a similar space close together as you are within your home. But then within that pod or group of people, are we thirteen feet away from the next person? So that's just to give you the analysis that we use to determine whether or not we, we could increase the, the, the tickets. In the swimming pool with a small number of bleachers, we're saying, no, not so much. No visiting spectators, no going beyond the four tickets that you approved last week for our home spectators. For the other sports, winter sports, we're saying yes. In the hockey arena, in the gymnasiums, we believe that we still could meet that thirteen-foot rule, i.e. have safe space. And move forward to that next step. So that's where I think it's up to you as a board, how you want to proceed with that discussion this evening. See up here on the board, the, the way that this has been presented the, the last several weeks is essentially in the blue. You're seeing that as a recommendation. But again, I know there was discussion with this board to say, well, would we allow more tickets? Show us the math behind this first of all, before we take another step beyond the four. And the board also had some discussion to say, we want to make sure that we're accommodating our home folks first. As to whether or not we might consider the visiting parents.
So to be clear, last week we already made the decision that we were going to add math, up to the number, the limit mathematically for home guests. So that's already action that we've taken. And now there's a, a perspective for us to be able to add up to two people for guests. How does the board feel about that? This is the time to get that done and I'm hoping we can get it done with a direct conversation that doesn't go on forever.
Was it, was it tied to that, that those two have to be in the same pod?
The two guests?
The guests, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
And Raleigh, how do you control entering and exiting today?
We kind of did this in the fall with volleyball. Once we got to the tournament, if you called, we had to. In order to host events, we had to allow visiting parents. So we did it in volleyball. We have one. They come through one door, the other team comes through the other door. That works in the gym. Does that work for swimming?
Yes.
That is, that's the type, no, no practice team doing swimming at all. Everybody but us and Monami are doing visiting parents. The gym will be a little bit different for basketball than volleyball was, just because of how we're spreading out our teams, our, our teams. Back and forth. And they're not just great, just straight lines. But I, I was over there with my man.
So teams are not sitting as you traditional would see on a sideline of a basketball game, one chair next to another chair, next to another chair. Sitting on a bench, so to speak. Raleigh has them all spaced out and even staggered into two or three rows that even those sitting on the sideline. Athletes sitting on the sideline are staggered and spaced out.
Right now on the north side, I know one basket that we could use, we're not even pulling that all right now. We can still use the upper running track. Hockey, David is a hockey parent and we talked about it the last one. With our fans, they're half of our seating wasn't being used, right? The whole bar. So I'm, I'm relatively sure we would be fine. And we have three hot teams left. We're getting burned at here too. That was, that's the other thing. Gymnastics, we had an invite on Saturday. There was seventeen, but we broke them into four and three different types during the day. We only let the home parents and it was pretty much deserted, to be honest with you. Some of these sports just naturally have less fans that don't, don't play in them at all. But that's, that's the matter and we don't have to pay a number. But hockey, I, I feel if you want to do it, we can do it, right? We are taking some heat and I don't really care about, we take a seat, but that's just doing work from other communities. Well, how come your people can come to our school and we can't come to yours and you just don't, that's our. That's what we're doing. But wrestling, we only have one more heat and we'll have two more. We had one last week and we just had the one side with our parents and we could have put all the people on that side and open up the other side. We are going to run a match at the middle school too incorrectly and flip-flop some teams. Middle school actually had more seating than high school, so we did right all the.
Yeah. Is there any kind of procedure, I don't know how you would do this, is there any kind of procedure to, to attempt to control distancing when they're entering and exiting? Especially, especially exiting.
I, I put Mark Stone on the seat.
Not on the seat, but when they get up and they, they leave the, you know, the gym.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking about that, especially with Todd, he might be, you know, the biggest concern is called out one line.
Yeah.
I think you would have one Google first, probably the visitors because they're, they're driving home. And they, they'll just leave. Our, our parents might be sitting out there waiting for their kids. So for that, I think we can do it that way. If basketball, we're both on the same side, I would assume we would do it the same way. The other way, if we just move the people out of the back door. I don't, I don't know who wants to go there. But they come out different doors to me. You know, this guy.
Yeah.
I'm an old, I'm not a part of the kid, but I saw enough, well, you can bet you were on the death.
I think Bob was next.
Raleigh, how many other schools in our, our conference are limiting or are not letting visitors attend?
There's nothing.
Okay.
Sorry, that was, are not letting?
They're not letting it.
They're not letting.
Other than, other than.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the Big Rivers, I think, I'm sorry, the Middle Forks, that would be the second tier conference. So I was, I was at Elwood, New York, and they raised that. They all, yes, the conferences are not allowing right now, but they're meeting in the middle of the month, whatever that is. So I'm assuming that's easier to just be there. And they're, they're taught, it's got a lot of visitor queue. Probably goes with last, can't tell you.
Alan.
Raleigh, I really appreciated this memo today. I thought you just laid it out really well. You did some homework for us.
Did it right here in the football game.
Yeah. And it, it, it helped me sort of figure this out. And I appreciate the fact last week, I think Todd's the one that raised the issue initially. I appreciate you doing that. We had some good discussion about it to actually get some more tickets here for families. I think our, our first priority is the students and their ability to participate. Second is can we get some of the parents and family members to watch them? And the third is can, can we let the visitors have some parents to watch, right? And I think we're, we're doing that and we seem to be doing it safely and we don't seem to be having serious problems at this point. In part because you've been doing your homework and you've been keeping us informed and, and I appreciate that. So thanks.
It works when, when you have cooperated and you have, have cooperated so far. Both along the way.
Yes, Ted.
I just was going to say I'd, I'd be supportive. I was, I was supportive last week. I'd be supportive of, of us adding the, you know, especially now. Getting, getting maybe a better actual physical sense for some of those numbers. I mean, I, I've seen in the, the events I've watched online, you know, where I can kind of gauge what I deem to be quite a bit of space. But I'm pretty comfortable based on what's laid out that we're still looking at it with a fairly conservative lens. If we're talking about thirteen feet and, and you know, still fairly restrictive. The one, the one other thing would be, you said there, you know, there's only a handful of, of home events left for a lot of the teams. To me, it would be great if we could tackle or maybe we already have tackled the idea with volleyball that if the WIA. that if the WIA still is of the opinion and stance that if you want to host a home playoff game under their umbrella, that you would have to allow four tickets for each player, which would be a step beyond what we're doing here, is that correct?
Yeah, we did that with volleyball.
But that's the same now, if we're looking at like, if the hockey team is hosting, or the basketball teams are hosting, for whatever reason, we would be looking at that same thing. So anything we do now would have to have the flexibility to add that into it as well.
When we do the seats, whether it's two, three, or four, and I know much more people reading, but I always look at it as areas.
Sure, yep.
So for hockey, there's twenty kids on a team, I'm looking at twenty areas.
Yep.
And that's two people sitting with two people in row most times, alright? So they're just in a small pot, they gotta be, you know, for they can be together. If I, I don't last week, just siblings, I wasn't at the meeting last week, so I don't have to reach just my confidence to them. But right now, this last week, we let a couple women just siblings. And then what we stress to them is, we don't want to bring a friend for how I have to have another pot.
Yep.
Where they really should be sitting together, so then they need to be within the family, you know, where they can, that now we have, I have to find more pots for the siblings. I can find twenty five pots, I probably can't find thirty. So, but that's important.
Let's have Cindy.
I really appreciate the time that you've spent putting in, figuring out the space in each of the facilities, right, and what we can do safely. So I have two really quick questions. Do you, it sounds like you feel comfortable that you can enforce, because it's really going to fall back to you, right, that you can enforce the masking and you can enforce the distancing? That's one thing that you feel comfortable with that, based on your memo, I would hope that's the case. And two, we have the, I'm assuming also that we have the fresh air circulation in all of our facilities? We don't have a building that has just.
We do, I was looking, hockey is very cold during Monday night.
It's cold.
I know the high schools do, I mean, we just got, that part of our live pressure and then stuff to increase.
And the.
Everything is here now, you know. I like the fall where we're outside, we're at the football stadium, you know, all over. Basically, we're all right here except for hockey, so. And our gym is pretty nice, it's pretty wide open, as you know, with the upper running track. The extended gym that we don't use for games, but it's more air.
So at this point, do we have a motion to confirm the continuation of the present learning environment with the addition of two tickets for visiting spectators? Thank you, Alan, is there a second? Thanks, Bob. Any further discussion? Okay. Cindy, I'll start with you for a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
I'm saying yes, Alan, Bob, Amy. The motion is carried, thank you very much. All right, so Jamie has already alluded to the fact that right before the board now is a resolution to send to the governor and the state legislature, simply advocating for our people as educators and their ability to be vaccinated, because we think that, I mean, it's a game changer. If we can get our educators to be vaccinated, that makes a big difference for our students, our families, and our community. So have people had a chance to be able to read through that? Okay. Is there a motion that we would affirm that and then send it off?
Yeah, one second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? A roll call vote, Amy, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Alan, I'm saying yes?
Yep.
Yes. Yeah, the motion is carried, thank you, everybody.
Jesus, well, yeah.
So, it's a different kind of year for the WASB convention, but one of the things that remains the same is there will still be a delegate assembly. Bob is our representative. I would say there are two things about this. First of all, historically, what we have done as a school board is to empower our delegate to vote in the best interest of the school district. We have the option to direct him to, that we would go through and give him direction on each individual resolution. That's typically not what we've done. I know that Jamie has reached out to Bob and has provided some background in terms of how to identify what the best interests of our district would be. I personally feel comfortable with that, because I think it's wise to go in empowered to vote in our best interest, considering there could be amendments made on the floor and further discussion. So at this point, I would move that we give direction to Bob to vote in the best interest of the River Falls School District. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Any further discussion?
So, just, I had a couple of questions as I read through some of those when it went out. Particularly in regard to the one about sales tax. Is that something I should just follow up outside? I mean, I don't need to take up time now, but I mean, should I, is there somebody who I should follow up with, either Jamie, just to learn more about that, or?
Jamie's our expert.
Okay.
Yeah, the general concept is, I think it's Illinois and Iowa has such a tax in place. It's a sales tax, so the theory is, it's not a tax that gets imposed on everybody, and that one cent of the sales tax goes into a state fund that specifically then gets distributed back to districts to be used only for capital improvement projects, facility type of projects. And then theoretically, it would reduce the number of referendums needed to be held, which drives up property taxes.
Yep. In a nutshell. I'm curious about the control of the money, if, you know, I have less faith in something like this working well for our district if it's a statewide thing versus, you know, it's allocated based on, the state takes the money, but it's allocated based on enrollment, or it's based on the state aid that was allotted to your district, you know, like equally divided out versus we deem a roof project in Madison to be more important than a roof project, you know, like I'm thinking of the UW system and how hard we've had to fight to get some of those buildings here, and how long they've been delayed versus. So I, I mean, if it works, great, I'm just, I'm curious if somebody knows the logistics of how that would work and how the money would be divvied out around districts, or if all of us are now pleading our case to this fund for, hey, we need a roof here, or we need something at this building, and you're, you know, get in line behind all the other districts, or if it's automatically allocated to us.
That's a really good question.
Yeah, as I say, the distribution of it concerns me, and it could be such that where the one cent is generated, the sale commenced in Pierce County, so.
Yeah.
Or this school district, or how it is, that concerns me as well, because the UW system's a poster child for allocation issues.
I actually had a thought on that specific one too. And it was, I would hate, I would fear that if we had a sales tax that was somehow channeled to the school systems, politically, it would be used to say, well, now we don't have to fund these other categories of school funding as much, because we have this other category now going to the schools.
I think that's why periodically, every couple of decades, there's a major school refunding, refinancing, restructuring legislation, because that creep reaches in. I've heard that this is working in Iowa and Illinois, so I'd like it, I think though, what I'm hearing is that in the conversations we would like Bob to represent, that we would like local control.
Yep.
And there's got to be local priorities, because on the one hand, it'd be nice not to have to worry about having to do big bond issues all the time, because we can't control the money. The other challenge is, in the UW system, if we use it as an example, is if we're going to save up this money and do it, UW, the legislature's been notorious for taking money away from the UW system when they try and save up money.
Yeah, reading.
You can't set money aside in the UW system where the legislature will take it.
Yeah.
You just got to spend it when you get it. There are all those kinds of things that we have a bad history of in this state that couldn't count against it. But it might be an idea worth, worth process.
The other question I had is, what do they mean by one cent? Sales tax, I mean, it's usually on a percentage basis.
To me, that means a, like, one hundredth of a, like.
One hundredth of a percent.
So, or I don't know if it would be a hundredth or a tenth, I guess, but, you know, like I'm thinking about the stadium, you know, if you went into the five county area, when they passed the stadium in Milwaukee, it was, whatever, the five point five becomes five point six in those five counties. And I guess I'm.
I guess I interpret it as one percent, one cent. I think of it as one additional percent, that's how I envision it.
I think traditionally, that's huge.
Huge.
Oh, yeah, it's huge, it's huge money, yeah, absolutely it is.
I would, I mean, they built the baseball stadium on.
Yeah.
On point one percent, I, yeah, that.
That's why I was surprised at the amount.
But the challenge for us here is that a good share of our discretionary spending money in this county happens outside the county.
Yeah.
Happens, in fact, it doesn't even happen within the state, so that would be a challenge. Whereas down around Milwaukee, you could share that as regional money, the state and the region. So there's all those kinds of things we've got to.
It's, I mean, if you read the rationale, like towards the last sentence, like thirty seven through forty, you know, it talks about local school boards oversee facility planning, and this would allow them a funding stream, you know, so I, I suspect there's something built in there that, answering our question, I just was surprised that it didn't jump out and hit me in the face when I read through something what I would consider.
Well, even if we were to get this, this is a long way from being a law.
Yeah.
And, you know, when you build adage, when you're trying to design a horse, by the time you get through legislation, it'll look more like a camel.
Okay.
What this does is it's setting the lobbying direction for the WASB lobbyists, so this is not.
This is the very infancy stages of.
It would be, I mean, out of all the stuff on here, I read through a lot of it, broadband access in this one, were the two that really jumped out and hit me in the face in terms of, you know, I'd really like to know what that means for us.
In fact, the broadband access, I've written both of our local state representatives, just on my own behalf, not the district yet, but every politician that I saw run in for office this last fall was in favor of broadband. I don't care if they're most conservative or the most liberal, most conservative Republican, most liberal Democrat, everybody seemed to be in favor of broadband. So now, what I've been telling them is, so we're expecting something to get done, and it better happen this time. And if the COVID hasn't proven to us that remote working works, and that could be good for rural Wisconsin, that we don't necessarily have to bleed people into the urban areas for the good jobs anymore, they could be located here, but only if there's robust broadband.
Yep.
And we're a long ways from having that in Wisconsin.
Yeah.
And we need some bipartisan effort on that, that's got to be the, that's got to be the true bipartisanship.
So thank you. At this point, do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Todd, thank you, Mike. Any further discussion?
Do I abstain?
Nope, nope.
Good.
Direct yourself.
We always as a board owe a debt of gratitude to the person who is the delegate, and I think when it's virtual, it's a double debt of gratitude. All right, all those, I have to do a roll call, Cindy.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Mike, I'm saying yes, Alan, Bob, Amy.
Yes.
All right, the motion is carried. All right, we are going to move on to letter D, and that's that the board has already had discussion about the potential to approve a financial commitment of thirty thousand, yeah, thirty thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars to the Kenny Land Trust for the purpose of improving access and/or improvement to the school-owned forest property. This is money that has been in a designated fund for this purpose for decades, or at least a decade, and it is now time to disperse it. So I'll take a motion, and then we can have more discussion. Do we have a motion, please?
Sure.
Thank you, Alan, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Cindy. Questions or comments, additional information?
So I just was going to clarify this, and I think mainly for, I guess, just to say it out loud for people in the public, the way I understand it is, our portion of the funds, the closing is going to happen sometime here in the next month, and our portion of the funds then are going to be used essentially for whatever development comes down the road. You know, we're committing our funds to the future development to that site, you know, for our use or use by collectively by the group is effectively what we're doing here, and that's kind of what we've been earmarked for, so.
Correct, and so when this is done, not only will the Kenny Land Trust have acquired this land, but there will also then be an investment toward the first step in terms of developing it so that we can have access for our students and for the community. So two things will come out of it, getting the land and then the first step. Which is terrific, it's been a long time in coming. So we have a motion that's been moved in seconded, do we have any further discussion? I'll take a roll call, Cindy.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Mike. I'm saying yes, Alan.
Yes.
Yes.
Amy. The motion is carried, thank you. Do we have any proposed or future items for upcoming board meetings?
This is, this is just to piggyback off one side that Jamie had earlier, you know, one of the considerations for the five days per week at the higher levels, you had in there eighty to ninety student contacts per day. One thing that I've asked a number of different people about and tried to wrap my head around is, what's a realistic expectation for those teachers and staff members? And if there were to be all kids back, what's a realistic number of close contact points on a daily basis? I mean, if I have thirty kids in my classroom three times a day, do I have close contact with any of those kids? Or is it feasible for me to avoid close contact? And what tweaks would it take to, like, kind of the normal teaching method? Or is it feasible for our high school teachers to do that? It is on eighty percent of our classes versus the other twenty, where it's too hands-on or too interactive or whatever, space doesn't allow it. One consideration for me in looking to have those high school kids or the seventh and eighth graders come back, seventh and eighth grade's probably more of a cohort like six, but the high school, it's tougher to do if I knew what those actual close contact points would be with kids, you know, if they're in the hybrid versus how that would increase, you know, I understand the number changes of people that you come in contact with, but what is truly a close contact, or is there a feasible way to teach slightly different, but allow all those kids into the classroom, would be helpful in terms of understanding what the risk is to the staff and the teachers in doing that.
You're looking for something similar to what choir was as far as how many feet?
Well.
And how much a particular room would hold and.
I don't know that I'm looking for quite the same breakdown of like, okay, we've got thirteen feet, because I think that was more student to student. I think the teacher in that case had almost removed themselves to say, I'm not having contact, close contact with any of those band and choir students. Those are kids not being closer to each other. I think we would have to be looking at sacrificing some of that distance as a per-student basis in terms of close contacts. But in regard to the staff piece of it, I'd be curious to know if we think, or if the people at the high school think it's feasible that a teacher could make it through a day without actually having close contact with any of the students, what's deemed to be close contact for quarantine purposes if there are hybrid, which is existing right now, versus what it would be if that's five days a week, that would be one of the bigger considerations for me, and something I'd be curious to know, if that's just a hope I have that we can achieve something like that, or if it's not.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, that's an item that you would like to have added to the list of considerations as we move toward that. But in order to consider it, there would be some data and more information we need, so.
Or just even like a feasibility from, you know, we've, you know, maybe Kit could answer that question, you know, knowing more about how the kids work in the classrooms and things. But to me, that would, if we could clear that hurdle, that would make me feel a lot better about the conversation about high school kids in five days a week, or some of those older grade levels in five days a week, if I didn't have a sense that it was adding a whole lot of burden to the staff in terms of close contact, quarantines or exposure, risk exposure, I think it would help advance that conversation in my mind.
It would bring some concreteness to the risk.
Yeah.
And so could we say that at the point at which administration feels as if they have that information, that they would bring it back? I guess my point is to say, I don't know that that's going to come at the next meeting.
No, I agree, yeah.
But I think when they have it, that we'll keep track of it.
It just occurred to me when I saw, when I saw that eighty to ninety, it just occurred to me that I, I mean, in reality, I would hope we could make that number zero, but if somebody looks in and says, no, you can't make it zero, then I'm weighing that. then I'm weighing that decision differently from a staff perspective than I would otherwise.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do we have other items?
The River Falls, we're seeing.
The River Falls, that's, that's going to be going to FNF. So that's already on a future agenda. All right, well, so we're going to schedule meetings. And at this point, we have been meeting virtually without, with one exception, every single Monday since the middle of March. It seems like it might be a good time for us to be able to see if we could get back into a quote-unquote "normal" schedule. So Jamie and I are proposing that come February, we actually try that. So because we have important work that needs to get done and we have relied on our committee structure to get that work done. It also means we don't have to come every single Monday. We could always call a meeting if necessary and our administrators don't have to be here every single Monday. So if there's support for that, we will go back, we will try that in February. So at this point, there will be a board retreat on Thursday, January 21st at 6:00. The next regular board meeting will be Monday, January 25th at 6:00. Recognize that that's a change in date. It had originally been the 18th. We are changing it to the 25th. After that, there will be an ed program meeting on February 1st at 6:00. On February 8th, there will be a finance and facilities committee meeting at 6:00. There will be on February 8th, a personnel meeting at 7:00 or immediately following FNF. The next regular board meeting will be February 15th at 6:00. There is a possible celebration on January 29th that would be a candlelit hike with the Kenny Land Trust Board of Directors at the school forest. That sounds like the most fun meeting.
I just got that email this afternoon, so I have to get some more detail, but it's ideas. Land purchase goes through for Kenny River Land Trust, that there'd be a little celebration and they're kicking around a candlelight on the property, kind of a thing.
For Friday.
Stay tuned for further details.
I think that sounds like fun. So how does that sound, everybody? Think we can try this?
Actually, Stacy, I have a question.
Okay, Amy.
The 15th of February, is that a president's day? Is that a day off?
15th of February is.
It's a no-school day for kids. Insert this day.
So did you hear that, Amy? It's no school for kids?
Yeah. I just had a question. We had kind of talked about this last year. I know this year's a little bit different. If we weren't going to hold school board meetings on a day off like that. I'm just reminding you.
Yes, well.
If we wanted to move it to the 22nd or if we wanted to keep it on the 15th.
That's why we changed next Monday's meeting, rather than meeting on the 18th, because that will be Martin Luther King Junior Day and we decided that. I'll tell you, I could go either way. I'm a bit reluctant to go from meeting every single Monday to then have four weeks pass.
Yeah.
I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yep. But I'm open, I could, I could go either way. What do other people think?
If we resume our committee meetings in the other weeks.
But that's not a full board meeting, where we couldn't take any action. So it changes it a little bit.
I have that conflict on the second Monday, but if there's any way to work committee meetings around that, I got to fill in tonight because of the agenda, but I think, yeah, the second Monday of the month, I've got a conflict, but.
Yep.
Depending on, when is the two meetings stacked on the 8th? At what times are those again?
One is at 6:00, and one would be immediately following at 7:00.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a bit dismissive. But it's not ed programs, which is where I'm a committee member.
Correct. Jamie, what do you feel? Do you want to meet on the 15th? Or do you want to go to the 22nd?
I, from my perspective, it's fine. It's a regular work day. It's just the kids are not in school to leave it on that. Let it fall on that third Friday, or, excuse me, third Monday.
You guys okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Can we get you?
Yes, here. So, Amy, I hear you. We made the change for Martin Luther King. I think we're going to stick with it for February. We can always make changes later. At this point, will we have committee meetings still here because we have more space? So that's how that's going to work. All right.
Board retreat will be here?
Pardon me?
Board retreat here as well?
Yes, correct. Everything will be here. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned. Good night.